With a contractor, ergo directing staff to issue an RFP to bring somebody in when the contract we're in now ends and for a time in the future, or do we want the city to try and do that? That's one. The second is, how do we want to handle billing for that service? For curbside garbage and recycling service. Currently, our contractor, GFL, manages billing. You know from Ms. Goldsmith's presentation in January, that's quite unique. We're the only in the benchmarks communities that actually provide a billing scheme in that form. So those are the two items that I'm going to talk to and introduce, and I'm going to ask Mr. Norton to talk about the other two before we have Abby jump in and lead us through the survey questions.
Absolutely. The brush and bulk service that we offer, there's a couple of different options. The city actually offers and performs this service, but we can look at size limits, we can look at the service frequency, there's several different options that we can explore to maybe give a better service or to cut costs, whatever direction council wants to go in. And the last one being the downtown commercial sanitation service, you know, are we happy with what's going on there? Do we want to look at rate changes? You know, what's the status of that? So that's the main points that we're needing direction on to leave here to complete our mission.
And just so you gentlemen know, hopefully our councilwoman Jenkins joins us soon, in the audience, we have John Martin, Wendy LaRatunda, who are both manage day-to-day operation on the sanitation side too. So all the sanitation brains that the city employees are here in the room. So if you have any questions, guys, it's time, your time is our time. We're here to answer these questions, to try and get direction around those four points. So at this time, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Goldsmith, and Abby's going to take us through your survey questions, the questionnaire, your answers, and hopefully some of that conversation around those. Full disclosure, we haven't seen them. We don't know who submitted, how submitted. I know all of you submitted, so thank you. But Ms. Goldsmith's going to lead us through that, and hopefully that'll get some conversation moving, and we can get some direction thereafter. Abby, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, and confirm that I need to be able to share my screen. The host needs to allow me to do that.
All right, Abby, you should be able to do so now.
I can, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
How's that look?
There you go.
Okay. And can you hear me? Okay, louder, quieter?
You're perfect. We can hear you.
Okay. I'm going to the slideshow, so you have it full screen. Very good. Well, thank you for having me back, and good afternoon, evening, to the council members. And thank you very, very much for your effort to complete the survey. For those of you that may have had some trouble either doing it online or logging into Google, it obviously didn't stop you, but I'm sorry if it slowed you down, and thanks very much for your participation. And I'm going to be presenting the findings, and those of you that did create, submit in a hard copy, rest assured that those responses are also incorporated. And Mr. Craver, stop me if you'd like, if you'd like to have discussion around what I present, or if any of the council members would like to.
Will do. Thank you.
Along the way, because I'll be going in the order of the survey questions. The first question was, for which services should the city consider hiring a contractor? And what you can see on the screen is that most of you felt like services should stay at the same division of responsibility between the city and the contractor that they currently are, and that's with the contractor collecting garbage and recyclables residential weekly. And one vote for providing all the services, yard waste and bulky as well. One of the comments was, it was hard to answer that without saying numbers, so I want to show you a little bit of numbers, because actually that was also came up in some of the other questions. We did do an analysis of what it would take the city to get into the business. I want to preface this by saying, probably the bigger challenge than cost right now, and I think we talked about this a little bit in January, is it's a huge challenge for public or private sector right now to hire drivers and collectors, and of course there's something of a backlog, especially for small buyers in ordering equipment. So even if the city decides to go this route, I'm not sure you could be ready to do that by January. But let's set aside, and together, Mr. Norton and I looked at every single line item in the budget, and based on my experience elsewhere, and Mr. Norton's experience in equipment purchases and personnel costs in the city of Noonan, our estimate, the estimate that we came up with was that to purchase the equipment you needed, not including all the trucks you've got already for yard waste and bulky, but to get into recycling and garbage collection weekly as well, would be outright about 3.6 million. And then if you look at all operating costs, including personnel, other operating costs, most notably things like fuel, it's another 2 million, and this is a year. Plus, if you set aside, we've talked last year, last month, about allocating funds for equipment purchases on a regular basis. If you did that to replace the equipment when it reached the kind of industry standard for end of life, we're talking another $439,528. So the total would be about 2.5 million in annual operating cost, in addition to the 3.6 million in capital for new equipment. So kind of an analysis using the cost of service model I presented to you in January, at your current payment rate of 80% of your customers paying, the monthly fee to cover that cost would be 28.64. If we could increase to 90%, which I think is reasonable when we talk about city billing, we're at 25.49 a month. And then if everyone was paying, we'd be down closer to $23 a month.
Abby, can she hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, this is Councilman Kukoc. I have a question. What, and I was, I don't remember offhand, what is our current collection rate?
So 16.71.
Current customers pay 16.71.
And that includes all four collection services, the billing. If you want, I can go real quick to a slide that shows you the breakdown between GFL and the city of Attlepool, but that is what the fee is.
Yeah, currently, residents in the city of Noonan pay $16.71 per month.
But the collection rate was his question, not the actual.
Oh, oh, 80. You're at 80%.
About 80% is the current rate, under the current scheme where GFL does the billing. That's in part why city staff is going to recommend to you, along with Ms. Goldsmith, that we bring that service in-house. You allow us to be the billing agency. We believe we can get a better collection rate than 80%.
True. Most definitely.
That's one of the reasons.
Right, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
No, no problem, thank you.
And Abby, I think the mayor may have had a question.
No, I'll say the mayor.
Okay, you got, okay, all right. Never mind.
So then your question may be, okay, what is that, 22.94 up to the 28.64? How does that compare to if we continue to use private company to do it? So I just wanted to remind you, if the city moved to, if the city continued to collect yard waste and bulky item like you do today, but took over the billing and continue to oversee a contractor, then the cost to service estimate is that that would be about $8 to $9 per month per resident. That's assuming 90% of your customers are paying. And that means that, you know, to match that 25.49, assuming 90% pay, you have about $16.50 to $17.50 in with, per month, per household, per month, of what you could pay your contractor to kind of break even. So as long as a proposal, a bid, came in below that, then it's probably less expensive for a contractor to continue to collect. And right now, and I think this will go up a lot with a rebid, because it is everywhere, but right now, you're currently paying the contractor $9.60 per household per month. That takes out the billing charge and the host fee they pay you, because I'm trying to do apples to apples. So in other words, if it increases, if your bids increase by 50% or 75%, I still think your rates would be lower than if the city got into the business. Does that make sense?
Yes. I'm getting nod, nods, yes, affirmation.
Good. I can see the chambers, but not, very small, so I can't see them, so you have to be in my eyes there. Okay.
To restate what you said, if we continue what you believe the data shows with your experience and what we understand, the current marketplace, if a contractor continues to provide the service, we believe under that scheme, it's less costly to our residents than if, in fact, the city were to get into the business. Is that correct?
As, well, we'll see what the bids are, but if you put out an RFP, and the bids to provide just garbage and recycling collection weekly, no billing, you do the billing, that sort of thing, if they came in at, like I say, that costs 9.60 now, if we came in at $12 per household per month, you'd be significantly less than if the city was doing it. If it came in at $20 per household per month, which would be more than double what currently is being charged to the city, then the city may want to consider an extra round to get in the business. But I don't think, I think the bids are likely to be closer to 12 than 20. Does that answer the question?
Yes. Your experience with the clients you have a relationship with and those you're working with, is the bids are coming in at a number that it would be less costly to our residents to use a contractor as opposed to the city?
I, yes, I think that that would be the case for right now. And also, you know, things are very different than they were a year ago.
Correct.
And I haven't seen that many bids in the last year. We should prob, you know, I know what companies were bidding a year ago, two years ago, I think the numbers are going to look very different as they go around, but I don't think for the service you'd be requesting, especially if we could set some limits on what they have to do, I think it would still be yes, less expensive to maintain a contractor right now. And I'll reiterate that if the city, for some reason, feels it's important to get into the business, I would do it when it's not so hard to hire folks or to buy equipment. I'll, I'll give you one current anecdote from a client of mine, Columbus, city of Columbus. They do garbage collection and recyclable collection, and yard waste collection and bulky collection, and for the first time ever, they, even though they have the positions in the budget for all four of those, they've had to go out for an emergency contract to collect yard waste with a contractor rather than with their own forces, because they're down 24 folks in their collections operation. So.
Okay, well, full disclosure, I'm the one who put on there that I had to see the numbers first, as you might imagine. So I'm convinced now that we do need to go the contractor route, not the city route. I had some, so is there consensus on the council?
Absolutely, I agree.
Are we all, we're not taking votes, this is a work session, but tell me if we're not headed in the right direction.
Contractor.
Okay, all right, good.
So that directs staff, we will then go with Ms. Goldsmith, execute a task order to put together the RFP for a term starting January 2023 forward.
Okay.
Hire a contractor, correct? Okay, thank you.
There was one hesitation I have, and that was the question about the quality of service we were not happy with in the last six months, but do we think that's going to turn around now after pandemic?
I will tell you that, I don't remember whom called somebody to the carpet at the last meeting, but the customer service has improved mightily. I think Ms. LaRatunda can speak to that. I think you, she came to me a couple of weeks ago and said, I don't know what happened at that council meeting, but I'm not getting nearly as many calls as I used to.
Yeah.
And Mr. Norton can probably speak to that in particular. So around the customer service, it appears our current contractor has stepped up their game, so to speak.
Yeah, and one portion, when we, we're going to ask to take this billing in-house, the customer service is going to redirect back to city staff. So it will be city staff answering the phone, and then we will be contacting whoever the contractor is to put in those work orders or missed calls or whatever that may be.
Well, that's a great, great team to know, so.
So but in addition to that, Councilman DeBose, the quality of service, I think Ms. Goldsmith's about to talk to that, maintaining that quality of service about actually enforcing those, you know, parameters in the contract. And so if it's okay with you, we'll turn it over to Ms. Goldsmith, that she's going to talk.
She's going to go through the rest of the survey.
Yes, sir. So. All right, Abby.
So the next question, and I do agree that service will be better, and your bids, which you may not get as many as you have historically, because everybody's having trouble hiring and buying trucks, public sector and private sector, which is also why the cost may be higher, but if you can draw very clear limits about what you're going to allow your residents to do and not do, I think it's easier for a bidder to nail down the price. So this is relevant to the next question. You do have in your ordinance that only garbage in a cart would be picked up. It's generally not enforced. Sometimes the contractor picks it up, but if it's a lot of garbage outside the cart, then Mr. Norton's team has to go back out and get it. So the question is, would the city, is it, does it make sense to be stricter on the enforcement of, if it's not in the cart, with the cart closed, which is what your ordinance says now, then it gets left behind? Now, I understand the issues with leaving garbage on the curb, as far as aesthetics and vectors and that sort of thing. And you can leave a note, there are ways to mitigate it. You can offer them a second card if they need it on a regular basis for an additional fee. Some communities do that. We talked about that in the benchmark study. So you see the results. The majority of council thought that those limits should be enforced, and if you're clear about that in the RFP, it's easier for them to give you a firmer and lower price, I think generally, if they're not required to pick up anything that's outside the park.
Does everyone understand?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Norton, is there a way to estimate what percentage of households may be putting trash outside of the can? Are we talking 10%, 15%, 2%?
I have not run the numbers, but I would think it would be somewhere in the 15, maybe 20%, because there's a lot.
So in that situation, we would likely be asking 15 to 20% of our residents to pay for a second can.
Absolutely.
Are they the same 20% of the residents who aren't paying for the service?
I haven't, I have, I can't, I don't have good records from our current ones, so it's hard for me to tell, but it is possible.
Do they, are they charged now for a second can?
Yes, sir. There's the opportunity. Very few take it, because we'll pick up what's outside the can.
Because we don't, yes, because we just take it up and they don't have.
If we say you've got too much garbage, you're going to have to buy a second can.
Yes, sir. And there are ways that you can do that with kind of soft gloves. You leave a warning, you talk to them. If we're, again, managing the customer service side, as Councilman DeBose had discussed a minute ago, we can do that, we believe, and then offer that second cart to a point in which you're going to require it.
I mean, Christmas around, after, before and after Christmas would be the time, to me, that you would see so much more garbage and not see it very often.
Could you write into the, an exemption for certain holiday periods, maybe?
There are, and Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are cities that have an exception for the holidays, Christmas being one of them, that you can put extra garbage out on the curb, or they'll actually set out, roll off something, so you, if you've got tons of garbage, you can take it there.
It'd be safe to say, though, that there's a lot of people who think every week is Christmas.
That is true.
And it has been historically.
Well, especially with home delivery now and home shopping, correct?
Right.
When that was my question, is, is that 15 to 20% would you estimate? Has that, is that higher in the last two years because of a lot more home shopping? And if things were normal, it would be back around like to 10 to 15%? Or is it just kind of an always, it's always been about 15 to 20%?
I mean, there's always been an abundance of it, but I can't tell you how much it's contributed to.
But it has increased?
It has.
Okay.
Especially cardboard boxes.
And if you break your boxes down and stuff them in the right place, it doesn't create that much more.
Correct.
Abby, what is the traditional rate of a second can? Is it 50%, 100%? I mean, what's typical?
Can I jump over to our benchmark tables? I, if I remember right, we did have a benchmark table in January on that, and I believe, like, some were charging $4 for the extra can, one of them in particular, I think, of the benchmark.
It's certainly cheaper, is what I'm getting at.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
It's certainly cheaper than the initial.
And we don't want to discourage them from getting a second can by getting too much fee in there.
Okay.
I'd say the highest I've seen is maybe a few dollars less than the first can. And remember, if you think it's repeat offenders, then that solution works well. If it's periodically, people have a big party or whatever, remember there were some communities that sold stickers or bags for the extra periodic waste for a certain amount, and people would, people who just did it once or twice a year have that option. So you could offer one of those options or both of those options, depending on whether you think these are people who do it all the time and need that second can, or periodically.
I think when you start doing periodically or letting them this or that, you start getting into a gray area, and you can't figure out who's what. I just think that it's easier that you pick up what's in the can. If you don't, if you have too much, get a second can.
And remember, we also had examples, I mean, three of our benchmark examples had different size cans, so with the size you currently offer being the biggest, so if you wanted to offer a second can in two sizes at different fees, you could do that too.
All right.
Okay.
So this thing, it would really require a lot of like marketing education leading up to it, so folks understand, hey, this is the way it's going to be and how it is, and then put on there like the dates of like the trash holidays.
That's kind of critically important for any new service, yeah.
Well, yeah, and her last one was educate, educate, educate.
That's right.
I mean, and you got to inform them, and it's not just a one-time mail-out.
Okay, we need, we're going to need to move through this.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Abby. Let's go onto your recyclables, please.
Okay, so generally, you can see the results, a slight majority of you prefer to keep collection of recyclables on a weekly basis, which is what you have now, given the option of going weekly or every other week. I was, I think I put in the survey that some communities have moved every other week with a larger container, which you already have, and have a slightly lower participation and, but reduced costs. So slight majority of you wanted to keep it the same, and that's probably something we need to know for sure before we put it in the RFP.
Just can't understand everything she says, is my problem.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What she, you're lying, I just can't understand what she says.
Let me get, is that any better if I sit closer?
It helps.
Yes.
What she said, she said that we need some direction around, because this is less clear. It's 57 to, you know, 43 on this.
This is my feeling. I have more recyclable than I do garbage. If you came every third week for garbage, I wouldn't have a full can, but if you don't come every week, I'll have more than a full can of recyclable. I don't know how other people are, but I, and I take the big boxes to the county thing, but my regular, one person recycling is almost full every week, and sometimes really full.
And I'm the opposite.
Recyclable, Lord, she wouldn't have that.
Well, I'd put it over in your yard, because I know you'll take it.
I guess what we're looking for is some direction, because this will be part of the request for proposals, when we put out to a contractor, what, do we want weekly or?
Well, if this was an election, weekly would win.
And it's, to me, it's hard.
Weekly would win, yes.
It's going to be hard if you do it every other week for people to remember when it's your week versus.
I think the results are weekly.
And I think, just speaking from a, like, with families, we fill up both. I mean, we fill up the recycling and we fill up the trash. And it's one of those things, I think, you know, the folks, you know, with more than one, two people in the household, it turns out being used a lot.
You need an extra can, right?
Nope. All right, so we'll go forward with weekly. All right, thanks. Thanks, Abby. We're going to go on to.
Okay. I'm making notes, I'm sure you are too.
Yes, ma'am.
Same question for collection of yard waste. Even a much bigger majority of you felt like it needed to be weekly, collection for yard waste needed to be maintained. Moving on?
That's the leaf and limb brush?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And does that, would that take into account, like, severe weather events?
Stuff later, we can say that again, I'm sorry.
Like severe weather events, you know, the tornado, a windstorm, you know, there tends to be a lot more of that stuff.
I'm sure we could carve out, and the city could step in as necessary, yeah. Sounds good.
Move on?
Yes.
I asked, right now, the ordinance does not have any limits for the yard waste collected. I think in January, we recommended that some limits be set, and gave some options for what those would be, and the majority of council agreed with that approach.
All right, gentlemen, you see, this is something we've talked at over the years about, we even, in so much that we put a model, I think it was three cubic yards in the, what we now call the ground level, no longer the basement, that's what we're getting at here, is setting some sort of a limit, and a majority of you have voted, indicated you're supportive.
Absolutely.
Which would take an ordinance change to set a volume limit.
The only problem I have on that is, and I was the one that put no, down my side street, we have five or six households that put it in one area. They all get together, go down Lambert Street, and put it at the end.
That would have to change.
What's that?
They can work, they can work through that, if they know the circumstances.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is, can you come up with something to figure that out?
Yeah, because, and I'll tell you, like, in our neighborhood, a couple of yards, we'll put ours all together as well, just to save, we're thinking, I don't know if it's true or not, but that the, you know, the claw truck will only have to take, make one stop instead of multiple stops.
It absolutely helps us with that.
Can I make a point here, though?
Same thing, plus it keeps it off the main street. It's back where it's not so unsightly.
Yeah, I think it's an issue that we can work through as long as everybody's transparent up front and say, hey, these are the houses that are, and if it becomes a, you know, a huge pile, then we may have to address.
Sure.
The issue.
Yeah.
Okay, you just average it out per house. All right, so we'll go with the consensus, and we'll come back, we'll come back at a future time with an ordinance change.
Were you looking at a certain size already?
I think there's some time for discussion for that. I know that we had presented a potential three cubic yards, but I, I mean, we'll be happy to get you some more information before that ordinance comes to you.
What's the proposal, is it three?
Three cubic yards.
That's something that we threw out and.
That's a lot.
Weekly.
Oh, it's, it's a lot, but it's a lot smaller than what we have now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying, it's a limit with a number, but it's a pretty, very reasonable number.
But you got to realize, this is from a guy who's still his own yard boy. So there are lots of weeks where I do nothing. This week, last week, next week, nothing, nothing, nothing. And all of a sudden, spring comes, or my winter yard cleanup hits, and it's more than, so how do you do that?
What does the council think about an amnesty day, like a quarterly, where there is a, we plan ahead, we know that there are going to be no limits?
I can't, I'm not going to not do yard work for waiting for the amnesty.
I'm the same way.
You can't shift like that.
And our, and our yards are so small, we don't have anywhere to store it, you know, put half out this week and put out half next week or something.
I mean, all of a sudden, I've got one Saturday at the end of the day, or Sunday at the end of the weekend, I've got 10 loads of bags out there.
There's no doubt that this is going to cause the biggest change in our service, but this is also the biggest issue that we've got as far as service that comes to drop.
I'm in the same situation. I rake my leaves when the fall season comes, it's every weekend, I clean them up. Well, and that's, but that's, the leaf truck is a different animal from the rest of this.
The way it's treated right now, it is actually treated and serviced out of the general function.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not going to.
We're not measuring leaves.
Leaves are not, these are separate, whole separate thing.
Unbagged leaves. Bagged leaves are still picked up by the Unbagged leaves. Bagged leaves are still picked up by the claw truck.
That is correct.
And that's the difference. The other thing is, is the, the leaf truck comes, I think, to this side of town a lot more frequently. We might see it once a year, twice, you know, over on our side of town. So there is some difference in services.
But we, we either gonna have to pay for it, the residents are gonna have to pay for it, and they're either gonna have to, in my opinion, you're gonna have to pay either in a higher monthly fee, or you're gonna have to be willing to pay your once or twice a year fee for the additional cost of the truck coming out, picking up, ready or not. I think those are the two things.
But this is not what's going out in the RFP.
No, no.
So you don't need direction there. You just need direction in order to put the total bill, the total amount together. Once we get the RFP, add these other fees to it, and that's the total amount that, that the billing, the total amount that the billing will go out from the city.
This is, yeah, this is city provided service, so it will not be part of the request for proposals.
But it'll be part of the bill.
Oh, absolutely.
So you need that number, but you don't need it tonight.
Right, so.
What we need to do tonight is make sure we include everything that's going out in the RFP, that you have a direction on that.
Yes.
Okay.
So, in, in my opinion, it just, at this point, just trying to visualize three cubic yards, it seems like it's adequate. I understand what you're saying. Maybe this, over the course of this year, we all try to sit there and visualize as we're putting out trash, what three cubic yards is, to get just a feel for it and see if it really is doable or not doable. Because we're coming up to the spring season, we're gonna be going into the fall season before all this happens. And it will give us a little bit of time to work with it, especially before January comes, and this is all in-house anyways, that we can adjust it, you know, fine tune it as needed, I think.
Ray, is three cubic yards, is that a four by four by twelve?
A, a good way to, to reference it would be, uh, two side-by-side refrigerators. That's pretty much a, a three cubic yards, or three washing machines.
Sub-zero or?
George is nine feet long.
Not a walk-in.
How many, how many loads, leaf bags is that?
Sir, I, I did.
How many low, low, the bags, that you buy at Lowe's or, how many bags is that?
I'll have to do the math on that.
Do you put the numbers, scrunch them down?
Councilman Shell said it's three by three by nine.
Yes, that is correct. Three by three by three is a, is a cubic yard, so it'd be three of them.
Three by three by nine, okay.
So Keith, you might just have to scrunch those bags down.
Just, just a reference, if anybody wants to see what it really looks like, the, uh, Saul three thing, which the Baxter Gardens run it, they go, they will deliver a cubic yard to my house very soon in a bag. And you can see exactly, you, you sit there, you think, visualize it, it's more than you think it is.
So that includes leaves, grass clippings?
And the only thing about limbs, you gotta make it cut to some limit.
Correct.
You can't just let any limb go out there.
Right. Okay.
We will ask for, for, for limits on limb sizes and tree diameter to keep contractors from, from getting involved.
It's currently like four feet though, isn't it, right now? Close to it? I mean, that's what I cut mine to, four feet, so.
No, the, the, the transfer station requires us to be below six feet, so, but that's not in the city or that's, that's a regulation they just threw on us here this past year.
Can't, can't put a tree out there.
Dollar amount that's being charged now of this, for this?
For bulk and brush?
Well, no, we're talking about.
Just, are you combining it right now? Okay.
Well, that's the only way that the bill actually combines it.
Okay, so what, how much is it?
Uh, Abby, may we go to that? Is it six dollars?
There you go.
Five eighty, five eighty-one?
Yes, five eighty-one.
Five eighty-one, okay. Okay.
And just as a reminder, your benchmark report has examples of the limits on yard trimmings, cubic yards, and how big the branches can be, and how big in diameter, how long. There's examples of that that we'll look to when we come to a recommendation to you for what the ordinance should say. And the reason it matters is setting limits will reduce the cost of providing that service, so it will impact the rate charged to residents. What, what limits we're willing to set will impact the rate that needs to be added to the contractor's cost, uh, starting in January.
Okay, so you're gonna come back to us with a recommendation on quantity and the price, is that correct?
Well, we, in our rate model that she showed, we, we know right now with really no limitations, I think you said arc at about nine dollars a month, it's where that program should be for the city billing portion.
Bulk and waste.
Yes, yes.
Uh, but obviously, that could talk, could potentially be reduced based upon the type of, of limitations. Now, let's be, let's be honest with ourselves. Any limitations is gonna help us compared to what we have now. Because right now, there is no limitation. We picked up several trucks worth of bulk debris. Uh, and I think we've got to have some, even if it's, uh, doesn't affect our typical yard cleaning. I think it's very difficult when we have, we, we picked up piles, what, a hundred, two hundred feet long, about six feet tall, the whole length?
Absolutely.
Multiple trucks.
And technically, that's something we could actually implement this year before we get into next year's building situation and everything.
Is it, is it feasible to break down of yard waste and bulk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because to me, I, I'm sure there's some who never put bulk out, but they put yard waste.
That's correct. And then you, when you get into some of the eviction processes, uh, we, we actually end up at times picking up whole houses.
Yeah.
Well, we, we had one lady who was, uh, someone else from the outside was coming in, dumping all their stuff, paying this lady, and we were picking that stuff up every week until the city finally got involved and stopped it, so.
Quick question for you. Uh, breaking down the, the yard waste and the bulk, what is our annualized cost to the city, you know, on average, per year, year to year? Uh, what we're paying out on all that, and how does that work out per month for what we're collecting? Are we actually breaking even? Is it, uh, are we, are we at least breaking even? Are we, we're in the hole? So that means that, to me, that indicates we've gotta raise the price, if nothing else, just for that portion of it, but how much do we need to raise it?
Or add a combination of some of your colleagues that say councilman, or set some restriction, with, there are two levels, two levers to turn.
Correct, correct. And if we set, say we set three cubic yards, what would that potentially decrease it to, you know, I, I'd just like to see some numbers on all that kind of stuff, you know, actual year-over-year numbers.
We, we can bring that back to you with the recommendations.
Great.
So if we go on to number six, if we can, then that talks about the, the bulk items.
Abby, you ready? There we go.
Okay, uh, so half, which was the majority in this case, um, where the most fa, most favored was to keep bulky items collected on a weekly basis, as opposed to less frequently.
So how often do we see repeat bulk at a location?
Uh, we'd say it weekly.
At the same, the same house, over and over and over again? That was my question.
Yes.
Then, then where, then at what point does that house become vacant of all the things that? Because where I, where I think I'd, I would like to make us, have us think about going as to an a la carte on this.
Go to a what? Call?
A call.
Call, call for service.
That was my suggestion. I, I agree.
You call and you say, I've got two refrigerators and a sofa and.
And if it's within the size limit that we set, it's not charged, right?
Because why have someone drive around all over the city looking and burning up fuel?
Shouldn't we limit the number of calls one household can have in a month or a tick time period?
They're paying us. Why do you limit?
Oh, you're talking about paying per call?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, there's.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you were saying one free.
No.
I mean, what do you think the percentage of households in, in Newton is that has, although you're getting repeat customers, I mean, is it ten percent of the houses have bulk pickup?
I would say probably thirty to forty percent have some type of bulk out there.
Weekly?
Yes.
Wow, weekly?
On a weekly basis?
Weekly. Holy smokes.
Is that citywide or just, like, focused in one area?
Um, I put it in the basement.
It, it is more of this side of the, um, the interstate.
It's more normal this side?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's a lot of bulk trash.
That's.
There is.
Yes, sir.
Well, still, I'd like, I mean, to be able to reduce that number, that five eighty-one's gonna go to nine bucks, if you tell.
Well, remember, the nine, eight to nine bucks was not just for brush and bulky. Um, that was brush and bulky. That, we should go back to the cost of service study for that, but that was the city taking over billing. Uh, the cost of service study suggested about a dollar was needed per year to oversee the contractor. Um, so all those things were included in the eight to nine dollar a month estimate. We should go back to the cost of service study, which I've got also here on a separate presentation, to look exactly at what our estimates for the cost to provide brush and bulk collection each year for the next ten years and the associated rate would be. But we can bring that specifically back to you in a package, if that's what Mr. Gregru was suggesting.
Yeah, I mean, would council like to see an a la carte charge menu for call-in? I've got a side-by-side refrigerator, that'd be three bucks.
So, so we're going with what was just proposed here, a per ca, per call for pickup with a fee base, is that correct?
That's what I'm saying.
I agree.
That is probably one of the, the biggest ways that we can control costs, because now the vegetative debris is commingled with the other stuff, and it has to go to the landfill. I can't take it to Newton Utilities Transfer State, or the compost facility, because it's commingled. So we could actually really, you know, a big, big bang for our buck, control cost if we done that.
Okay.
And if you remember, in the benchmark study, almost all of the benchmark communities required someone to call if they had a bulk item, and charged, maybe they'd give you one per week or one per quarter free, but beyond a certain limit, they would charge. Um, what I've got here, I jumped ahead to a question further down the survey, because the question was, which of these, quote, "extra services" should residents be charged for, and you see on bulky items, three of you voted for that. Uh, and that's what you're talking about now. Um, but I guess if I had to say what's the most common, twenty-five dollars per item, no matter, whether you charge or not, you have to call, because then you know, Mr. Norton's operational, know how many trucks he needs out, and which days, you could tell them, we're not coming every week. We will be there, you know, on this week to get your bulk. Um, and you keep track of who's putting out how much, at which address, and if they go beyond, you could give them a certain limit and no additional cost, or you could start charging for item number one. Uh, you have to be prepared, you may see an increase, usually temporary, in illegal disposal of those items.
Quick question for you, Mr. Norton, is, uh, like, she, she threw out a number, twenty-five dollars per item. How much does it cost if somebody wants to tote it, like, a, a refrigerator to the dump themselves? How much is it, like, the, the fee there for someone to do it themselves?
The landfill has, uh, Calwede County landfill, if I ain't mistaken, has a, a deal on Saturday that you can take anything that fit in the bed of a pickup truck for ten dollars for a resident of Calwede County.
Okay.
That's correct.
And not on Saturdays, how much is it?
I, I can tell you a per time price, but I don't, I don't.
Yeah, no, no, and that, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, because the other thing is, I mean, ten dollars, that's a, that's a deal, because if, if they call for service and say it's twenty bucks or fifteen bucks or whatever, twenty-five bucks, there's also the convenience. It's a convenience. You put it on your curb, you're not having to find a pickup truck if you don't have one, load it up there and all that stuff.
But if we could somehow reduce this frequency and have some control over the bulk, it may help you to be a little more lenient on the yard.
Well, I, and that's, I agree, because I, I, like Mr. Ray said, if we could sit there and have this call-in system and a, and a charge, you can really control, and you'll have it separate from yard waste.
And it may be that, like she said, there's, two times a year is free. Yeah, I mean, yeah, so, okay.
And then she mentioned like twenty-five dollars per item. Is that, whatever, whatever the price would be, per, would it be per item? Or would you have, like, specific pricing based on the size of the item? You know, like, a, a couch might be twenty bucks, whereas a, a chair might be ten bucks?
We, we can probably look at the benchmark data that Ms. Goldsmith gave us, um, and bring you back recommendations there.
That'd be great.
Right now, I'd be shooting from the hip.
If you don't want to save up for a year, you come get a whole household for twenty-five dollars.
No, but like, per item, is what, I think, or some, or some price per item, because otherwise, and that's also when somebody cleans out their whole house.
Wouldn't it be simpler to keep this program as simple as possible and not have as many options as we're discussing? But to, like, twenty-five bucks is, is twenty-five bucks, that's it, and this, and set the parameters with that without any option here, if it's this, if it's that, you know, I have a chair, I have a couch, I have a refrigerator, twenty-five, 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 whatever we come up with.
I think to me, they make a law with, with some reasonable number, pick up everything for twenty-five dollars, if it's one chair or ten.
Right, exactly.
Enough.
Keep it simple.
Some way or another, they control it where they can't, like I said, load up, but you make one call out there and you get it all in one grab or whatever it is.
Yeah, I, I think you still have to set some type of parameter, what twenty-five dollars is gonna pay for. But yes, simple, simple, for staff, simple.
Well, yeah, you can't say a chair's ten and, and, you know, you can't do that.
Or whatever it would be.
I'm just saying.
Max.
Well, plus, we haven't settled on twenty-five.
Yeah, I know.
Correct, yeah.
But I, I think between Mr. Ray's personnel and staff, y'all can figure something out.
Absolutely.
All right, Abby.
Next question.
Okay, so, we're back on bulky. The question of whether they had to call, you're, the majority of you voted no, but it sounds like we're leaning the other way now.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
Okay, and then the question is, should we set a limits on how much you get for free, if any? And we just confirm, yes, there should be a limit. Maybe, we'll come back to you with a recommendation, or staff will, on whether there should be a minimum as part of your base payment, your base rate, you get one per quarter or whatever. But yes, there should be a limit on how much you get for free or pay for.
Correct.
All right, we're moving on to costs, and, uh, generally, the consensus was yes. Whatever costs should be factored into the rates, as we did with the call, the cost of service study. Charge the rate for which all services are covered, uh, and then have an amount to be charged for those extra services, like the second cart or bulk items.
You guys under, does everyone understand what you just went through?
Right.
It's not real clear.
Another word should, should.
Abby, if you don't mind, please, please repeat that again.
Okay.
Please go through that one, yeah.
The reverse of this question is, does the city want to subsidize residential garbage collection? And the answer was no. So the question was, should the resident, once we calculate what the cost is based on what the contractor bids and the addition of the city's cost for bulk, brush, billing, customer service, should, whatever that rate comes out to be, twenty-five dollars per household per month, uh, for example, should the resident, resident, the household pay that full cost? And the majority, two-thirds of you said yes.
And that's, that's true. That's actually in contradiction with what the cent, the residents in the Central Business District pay. They actually pay less than everybody else outside the Central Business District.
Correct. Right now, you're, you're correct. We're, we're talking, right now, she's specifically speaking only to the curbside residential garbage.
Correct, yeah.
Scheme. We're gonna get to that.
Yep.
Um, at the end. It's kind of our last topic.
Yep.
We want your direction on.
I'm just tying the two together.
Okay.
Right.
All right, thank you, Abby.
Sure. Uh, back to that question, and the, the two items that more of you voted, although there wasn't a majority for any of these, uh, was for extra garbage that doesn't fit in the cart and bulky items, and it sounds like that's consistent with today's discussion.
Correct.
And yard waste, uh, we said we wanted to set limits, but we didn't say we'd charge beyond those limits. We just say, we're not picking it up if it's more than this limit.
Well, a, and, and I might add, if it turns out that we're doing better on the garbage that doesn't fit into the cart or the bulky items, if it turns out that the yard waste doesn't have a limit because we're doing better.
I think you need a limit of some sort to prohibit that multi-three-truck type situations. I mean, I mean, it may not be three cubic yards, maybe you decide to go to five cubic yards or something.
That's, yeah, I'm good with that.
You know what I'm saying? It still gives the homeowner plenty of options to do the seasonal cleaning, but it doesn't allow the curbside.
Six, six pine trees.
To be clear, we're not gonna know any of this until we get into twenty, uh, twenty-four. Because of twenty, well, twenty-three is gonna be a, a year when we're gonna really digest the numbers, how it's working, how's, once the program's launched and how, how's it affecting. Right, but at the end, when real costs, when we start doing this, I think she, she allowed a flex year, established, right.
Yes, we would like to roll into the twenty-twenty-three program with all the new parameters.
Right, exactly, that's, yeah. Right, exactly, that's, yeah.
All right, Abby, thank you.
Okay. Significant majority of council agreed that the city should take over the billing for the reasons we talked about last month and that to track services better. Plus frankly, these additional charges and calling for service only works if the city's doing the billing, really. So, I don't know.
Yeah, consensus around that, yes.
There, there is one question about the billing. We need to decide if we want to hold the homeowner, the property owner?
Property owner.
Or the rest.
The property owner is the only way it's going to work.
And that's, that's the way staff prefers.
Sometimes, we, Mr. Sears, do you want to provide a little bit of insight maybe around that? We've talked at times as staff around the table, why we believe that's a better way.
Well, part of the reason is because a lot of these tenants tend to move out very quickly. So, by the time you give notice and then you go in inside them, they're gone.
Plus, they got a bunch of books, so they gotta go pick up.
And of course, council knows, it's been pushed back from a lot of the, the residential, uh, uh, the local, now I'm not talking about the out-of-town folks who own residential property, but particularly a certain group of people who own property that they rent out that is covered under the, not GFA, but.
Grafa.
Grafa. And, and of course, Grafa sets the rates. And so, if, if, if the tenant's not paying the rate, the concern from the property owner is that his net, based on what Grafa allows him to collect, because he can't collect any more than that from the property owner. So, whatever these rates are, what, fifty-two dollars a month? So, if he's rent for seven-fifty, because that's what Grafa says it's worth, he's only netting seven-hundred right off the top.
Okay, so my, my response, my response to that is that most people who don't like the profit they're making in a business, you get out of it.
Well, that's been our, that's been the position that we have taken on some of those.
What position are we going to take on, let's say, someone has a rental house and it's empty for a month? Do we continue charging them?
They owe.
Yeah, that's fine, I just.
Well, what's been going on before.
It's not our fault it's empty.
Is that, is that if, if the power is off.
Correct.
And no one is living there, then we're not pursuing it.
Sure, okay.
That, that has been the policy today.
Good.
But if the power is on, then code enforcement pursues.
That's fine.
But there is a, a piece of that, there's still yard work going on, even if a house is vacant and there's stuff that still shows up on the curb, but.
Sure.
So, in other words, the, the city is not getting the four dollars when that's going on. All right, but they still may have to pick up yard waste if somebody's looking after the yard. And then, of course, that gets to be a, an observation situation is that if the stuff's out on the curb, we don't know who picked it up or not. So, that, that is a little bit of a downside to not pursuing collection or charging. If the house is vacant, the power's off.
What's the next question? This is the last one.
Okay, thanks, Abby. Thank you.
The next question was, okay, if the city's doing the billing, what's the best way to do it? And you see, there's even split between utility bill and an annual assessment. If you remember in the benchmark analysis, only one of the communities used an annual assessment. Most do put it on a utility bill. Typically, residents would see more, be more compelled to pay because they see it as a, the chance of having their utility shut off if they don't pay their garbage bill. Now, it was mentioned last month that utility bills sometimes go to the renters. Not the property owners.
And plus, I don't think we can ask Noonan Utilities to do this.
Okay, we have to pay them a fee if we do it.
They don't want, they don't want to do it.
Well, they're not in the sanitation business. And when we do that and they've got their phone number on that bill and if somebody's got a problem with sanitation, that's the number they're going to call. And it's just simply not fact.
Okay.
For them to be taking those phone calls. We need to own this, we need to control it. So, I don't, I'm not in favor of utility bill. Whether it's annual or on the sanitation.
Our own separate sanitation.
Yeah, I, yeah. What does staff recommend?
If you, if you do the annual assessment, then that takes away the whole situation about whether the house is occupied or not.
That's true, that's true.
You get that bill, so you're not worried.
Can you explain how an annual assessment would be billed and collected?
I think Abby can explain that.
What does staff recommend?
Abby, did you?
I want your Abby's response.
Okay.
Did you hear that question?
I did. Uh, so, in this, I think I mentioned last time, in the city of Atlanta, the tax commissioner sends me a sanitation bill at the same time I get my property tax bill. Now, I'll tell you, the city of Macon, I think I mentioned this last month too, is the city of Macon went from a quarterly sanitation bill to an annual assessment and had a huge public outcry because it was such a big number to pay all at one time that city council backed off and went back to quarterly because it was, there was so much resistance. So, just something to be prepared for. But my bill comes from the tax commissioner, even though it's an assessment, not a tax, which is.
But it's a separate bill from your tax bill?
Now, it is, yes. As Mayor Brady said, because there's some issues.
Basically, it's just a one-time annual bill.
Correct.
Right, right.
Does that make sense?
The city, the city should bill, in my opinion, quarterly. I agree. Because, exactly, because.
To the property owner.
Yeah, if you want to do, but at least.
And remember, it's not as, it's the experience of some communities. And like I say, most do put on utility bill, that if it's just a sanitation bill, a property owner feels less compelled to pay it than if it's on a utility bill. And I guess I never, and, and Mr. Norton said the same thing about utility bill when I offered that, said the same thing that I heard from you, that you can't ask the utility to bill for sanitation. So, I, I'm just unclear why it's different than in other communities where that is feasible.
Ms. Goldsmith, we, we manage our utilities somewhat differently. There's a council-appointed three-person commission that hires a general manager and she and he operates the system.
Okay.
It's not a city department.
We don't bill utilities. City, the city of Noonan does not bill utilities. Noonan Utilities bills utilities.
Uh huh, okay. So, you're wait, just, with, there were just, with a quarterly or a monthly or a bi, every other month sanitation bill, there just have to be some penalties. And also, I guess this is impacting the ordinance drafting. There'd have to be some, some motivation for the property owners to pay for that service since you're likely to provide the service whether or not they pay.
You had mentioned in your earlier presentation to council that the average collection rate was about ninety percent utilizing the utility bill. If we do a standalone, separate sanitation bill, what would you project that collection rate would potentially drop to?
No, no, I'm trying to think why it would be different than the eighty percent you get now. Because basically, that's what, how the private company bills it now, right? How your contractor bills it now.
Yes, but we're not certain what their collection efforts are versus what the city's programs, what efforts would be.
And they're billing the, the resident, not the homeowners.
Right, I was going to say, well, if that, being, being the owner, Brad, at what point in time can we, if owner won't pay, what can we do?
We could say.
Well, there, there are several ways to do it. You do it from a collection standpoint. And that's why doing it annually, if they didn't pay, you could do it from a collection standpoint once. But if they didn't pay quarterly, then you might have to take that action every quarter.
But is it going to be easier, is it going to be easier to go after the property owner than it is the renter who might be moving?
Oh, yes, property owner is, you know, that, that, property owners would be much easier than trying to go after fluid renters.
Plus, the fact of the matter is, these, these would be our bills and it's owed to the city.
Correct.
Not us collecting something that is owed to Weiss Management GFA.
Correct.
Which has been a, which has been problematic.
Our people have historically been pretty successful with these efforts. So, I'd like to think we're better than eighty?
I certainly hope so.
The more we, the more we collect, the less the bill is.
Sure.
Right, right, and that we've shown. I, I think as long as you're willing to pursue it legally, I don't think you're willing to stop collecting garbage from those houses that haven't paid, right? So, your only option then is to pursue it in municipal, in municipal court. And I guess as long as you do that, then you can move it from, the needle for maybe towards ninety.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sears, a quick question is, option between collections or municipal court, which one would be the better option for collections? I, I would think municipal court, I mean, just the stigma of collections.
That's something that we've talked about before, is that you technically can't use the municipal court to collect money that's owed to the city. All right, the way we've been doing it is because of the requirement that you have service, all right? But if everybody's got service, then that, that particular issue might go away. Now, the other side of that coin is, is that in those instances, and that's for paying for the trash service, but in those instances where you've got the accumulation and some of the trash that is still on the street because of lack of service, then we probably still could use the municipal court for that part of the service. And, and so, then it's a balance on.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, you know, having a contract. If we did all billing in-house, it still holds true with, it'd be better not to use municipal court then.
Correct. And that gets in, that's when you go, you know, one of the issues that you're always going to have with some of your properties in the city that are air properties, and there may be forty-seven different owners and some of them may not even know who they are. And there's somebody living in there. So, we will have to build something in the ordinance as a mechanism that we can go, they're not tenants, do you see, they're residents. So, that we use them and view them as the property owner.
Okay, what else do we have on this?
Abby, open up for questions, yep. Downtown was not covered, downtown commercial service was not covered in the survey. However, it was one of our discussion topics that we wanted some clarity on. Do we keep the program where it is now or not? It was part of the study and so we thought while we're talking trash, no pun intended, that we would try and get some clarity and direction on that. Keep it the way it is or make adjustments as this body may seem fit.
Give us a quick thing, right now, we've spent approximately X, we collect approximately X.
Historically, Councilman, we have subsidized that effort to the tune of a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. This year's budget, we have a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in there.
A hundred and ninety of the total, how much?
Oh, gosh, what's the total? We're putting in, gosh, it's at least thirty percent.
Well, I think the subsidy's more at fifty percent.
The subsidy is, the, the general fund subsidy of that operation is nearly fifty percent of the cost to provide the service. Keep in mind all the while, though, when this body voted to move forward, it was not just about trash.
Right.
It was, let's keep the alleys clean, let's keep the sidewalks clean, let's power wash. So, there's an added service, it's not just removing waste from a can.
Yeah, that's why I say the street, we're keeping the streets clean and the cars picked up on the cans in the street versus, and any, any business can dump their stuff in those cans, but we're also keeping streets and looking better.
Yes.
And so, and I don't know whether fifty percent is the right number, but at some point in time, the city should be paying for part of that.
It's the pickup of the cansters on the sidewalk, it's the cleaning of the sidewalks, it's cleaning of the alleys. But I don't know that that's fifty percent. So, I'd like to see what that number is allocated to a more justifiable, um, cost.
Okay.
Per customer.
Because to me, the restaurants by far produce the most trash, it's just the norm.
Yes, sir.
And some of those businesses where people don't even, I mean, all they have is a computer and an email system, they don't create much trash.
Right, yes.
Mr. Martin, as you're servicing downtown, what percentage pickup would you estimate comes from a restaurant?
Eighty percent?
Eighty percent?
Yeah.
There's your, there's your.
And as you can see on the graphic up here, that's in your rate studies, those provided in materials, you can see what the current rate is and then Ms. Goldsmith has put a, a number on what it would actually, actually cost.
To be whole.
Correct.
We're probably not moving towards whole.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a jump, let's, and, and a couple hundred percent in some of those categories. However, you know, with this body's request, we can come back and give you an idea on what that additional cost to provide the cleaning, you know, the kind of separate from just pulling a waste can, we can try and get our heads wrapped around that.
The other side of that, we're getting sale, a percentage of the sales tax revenue that everything that somebody buys in a restaurant, if it winds up in the garbage can, we got sales tax revenue on that alone, right?
But you, you have the intercross fund versus general fund. We don't receive sales tax revenue, property tax revenue, the intercross fund.
And I, if, if we hadn't done it, I'm having a hard time squinting to see that, but if we can break it down, I'd like to see it broken down on a cost per can.
We can try, if you recall when this body put that to get, the program together was to remove cans. So, customers aren't assigned cans, they share cans because that was part of the strategy to get cans out of the eye. So, it'd be hard to give you that number.
We need a rate model that way.
Yeah, don't go through that, don't do that.
I do have a question, though. If we raised the price for, was it office one and residential, to match, to, to be no less than what everybody else residential is paying in the rest of the city, how would that affect the, the, the fund? How, would it decrease it from fifty percent to like forty, just forty-five percent?
I don't think you'd see a significant.
But it, but it would, it would be, it would help a little bit.
If you wanted to really help and you only wanted to target certain business types, it's the restaurants.
Restaurant.
I'm just looking at the equitability that, you know, residents and stuff are not paying the same as what everybody else is to look.
How many residents are downtown, ten, fifteen?
No, it is more than that, it's probably a couple hun, probably hundred, hundred and fifty, hundred.
What, all right.
I mean, do you?
No, 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 that's a couple minutes.
How many customers?
Residents in the downtown trash service.
Oh, we only have two hundred and fifteen?
Fifteen, that's what I said.
And how, how many office ones roughly? I mean, I, I know this is like pulling it off, I appreciate it.
Yeah, there's, that is, office one is probably our highest number of accounts that we have downtown. Just off the cuff now, not without me pulling that out.
Yeah, and I saw that in the study that, you know, about the, the pay in between the central business district. Again, just to kind of make it, because they are getting a much higher level of service and they're paying less for it.
Not necessarily, they're not receiving recycling service.
And they don't get bulk, and they don't get yard waste.
So, they don't get any of that?
No.
And they have to take it out. They don't get it picked up at their door, they have to take it out and dump in the can, right?
Correct.
But they're using the same can that a restaurant next door might use, just in the trash. Doesn't matter whose can it is.
It's so, it's so minor.
Is, is there a goal to, with downtown sanitation, to make, so that it pays for itself? Or to least, that we subsidize it as least amount as possible? What's, what's the end run, what's the end game?
Kind of what we were saying earlier, there's a, there's a cost that the city, I think, should bear for keeping the alleys clean, the sidewalks clean, the sidewalk trash cans emptied, those things that aren't attributable to any particular business downtown, but they are in this budget.
I think we ought to remember.
I don't know what that number is, though.
If I could have the floor from, I think we ought to remember where we were ten or fifteen years ago with the downtown sanitation situation and where we are now. I mean, we're light years ahead and I'd hate to see us.
Throttle to it.
Quality is so much better.
Well, that being said, I agree with that. But looking at that chart. But looking at that chart, looking 10 years down the road, there's some, there's some numbers there that are some big numbers. So.
The wheel adjusts.
Come, come to this point, we're, it's great that we're, we're here, but now we're projecting into, into the future. So that, that's my question, are we going to minimize the subsidizing and how we go about doing that? I think is, is, would be fair to ask, right?
Well, there, there ought to be an annual adjustment. I mean, and that's where you get, lots of governments get stuck with lots of issues where there's not an annual adjustment, and all of a sudden, after 10 years, you've got this huge number. And that's, that's not fair.
That's right, yeah. Not all too different from our current provider. They chain it to the Consumer Price Index, there's a, a number of some sort. This body could decide something like that or something different, year over year.
Instead, instead of just a random number, just put some inflation.
Thinking out loud with you guys.
Right.
I mean, the, the trash people put that in their bills, don't they?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Okay, we've got about 18 minutes till the meeting starts. Have we got anything else here, or we need a break in between?
I have the direction. I think we have the direction we need. I want to thank you all very much for your time today. Thank you for your input, thank you for filling out the survey. Thank you to the staff for being here. Thank you, Mr. Norton, very much, Mr. Sears, Mr. Martin, Ms. LaRutanda, and Ms. Goldsmith. So go enjoy that Arizona sun, or I think that's where you are. Yeah, all right, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so absent any other questions or comments, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Motion second, we adjourn the work session, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, like sign. We'll be back at 6:30.